Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It's 6:02. We are in the library at the Grafton Elementary School. And this is the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. And this is our meeting for November. And it's because there was some last minute things that it is considered a special meeting, though it really is the regular meeting just on Thanksgiving. So with that, introductions is the first item up. And I'm going to start with our remote person, Krista Gay. Tell us who you are and why you're in, what you represent. And you really do have to turn your bike on.
You would stop for years, I could figure this out. Sorry. Hi, Krista Gay, school board member from Athens.
All right. And then to my furthest right.
I'm Hardy Merrill from Grafton.
Angela Cardy, the principal here at Grafton Elementary School.
Jim Vazina, finance.
Kathy Ciano, Goodwin, Grafton.
Jack Brier, Grafton. And I'm the chair of this board.
Lynn Morgan of Athens.
Nicole Barnett, admin assistant to superintendent and taking minutes.
All right. First item up is just after this is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any? Not hearing any. Do we have anyone that's come in wishing to make a communication or public comment to this body?
I don't see anybody on there.
Then we will move on to item one, principal's report. So that must be me and you, Angela.
That's me. So our current enrollment at GES is at 37. We were fortunate enough to welcome back one of our students from VTBLC just a couple weeks ago. And that transition has been fantastic. We held our Halloween parade on Halloween, a Monday, and our students and staff dressed in their costumes and we paraded around the village here in town. So that was a fun time. We had our Thanksgiving feast that many of you were there for last week. And we also celebrated our veterans during that time. And I don't have the exact count because the count that I have isn't correct, but I want to say we welcomed about 100 people.
Yeah, that's what I had.
Tomorrow we have our circus. So this entire week we've welcomed Troy Wonderly. And every class had the opportunity and then actually a little bit more because we had some indoor recess yesterday because of the snow and the rain. So every class had 45 minutes with Troy in the gym each day this week. And then tomorrow at 8:30, we have our dress rehearsal. Each class is performing three acts, which is great. And then our actual show will be at 10:30 tomorrow morning for families to come in and see their kiddos in the circus. And I was complimenting Troy today because it's like I was watching some of it and not to spoil, but it's funny. Like there's a lot of humor. And usually it's just the circus acts, but the kids are engaged in some really silly fun stuff. So please come if you are around. And then conferences are Monday next week for families. So teachers are in the process of scheduling those if they haven't already been scheduled. And so teachers will talk to families about growth successes and then some other areas for growth. And then Tuesday, it's an all day PD at the high school with lots of opportunities for connection and collaboration with teachers.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Are there questions from members? Any questions anyone has? Krista? Anyone else?
Angela, is there any chance that this office is going to be?
Yes, thanks for asking. Yeah, recorded. So I'm, we're not going to do the Zoom like we had done a couple of years ago. So last year we didn't have the circus. The year before we did and it was outside.
Yeah.
And it was towards the end of the year and we had a Zoom going. We're, I'm just going to record it on the iPad. I was talking with the tech department and that seems like the easiest. And so I'm gonna, we're going to record it on the iPad and then Jamie is going to configure it however we need to so we can get it on the website and include it in the newsletter. And everybody has a media release, so it's acceptable for us to put all of that out there.
And are you doing it or is our newly hired PR open, you know, for the SU doing this, helping you with any of this?
So I'll do the recording on the iPad. And I've invited Kate, Kate O'Connor is her name. I've invited her to come. She's got it on her calendar. She's going to try her best, but I'm sure that she's going to disseminate it out to the, to the world.
It would be, I'm going to put it this way, it would be my expectation that she helps you.
Yes, yes. Yeah, Kate's been out here, I want to say three or four times. Yeah, so she's on board and yep, she's with me and teaming up. So it's great to have her.
All right. Very good then. We're coming up onto item six. And since one of these involves resignation, is this something that we have to discuss in, that should we be advised to keep having a brief executive session and do it that way?
Yeah, I'd like to tell you. So I think it would be.
I would like to hear. So what I'm going to suggest we do is move six to down under just before director's comments and let's have a chat about that because we've had something similar happen at the SU and I have a similar concern. All right. Tell us about this point six counselor.
So we changed the position for the point six counselor to be a full time position since that was sort of the need for folks who had declined the position over the summer is that they needed full time. So Andy and I worked with Nicole and we put it out on School Spring as a combined counselor for point six and point four as the title one teacher.
The title one would be trying to fill for November.
So for this year, I'm suggesting that Tracy Benet Perrin does the counseling as a point six. And she'll be here all week because she's also point four as our title one teacher. And so she'll be sort of like we have another position with our PE and restorative practices teacher, how they're here every day so they get a really good sense of our community and of our need and they can sort of be both things all day. And so Tracy would be here full time and split her days either as intervention or counseling.
Now, two questions and I'm going to ask everybody else to pitch in. First question is, is this a deviation from what we had budgeted?
It is.
All right. Because I think that's the first thing we need to touch on. And second, I, we'll be talking about budget.
Well, actually, let me correct that because the title one position is funded through the SU, very quickly. And so the point six counseling is what was budgeted.
Okay. So our budget, our piece of this does not change from what we did.
Right.
Because I want to be clear about that part of it. All right. So basically we'll pick up our 3% of the rest of it as part of the overall, as part of the overall assessment that we have.
I have some questions.
Yeah, I, go right ahead.
Did you have a committee interviewing the counselor?
We did. So we were just trying to get it in quickly because we knew, and that's something that I had talked to Andy about because her schedule, she works full time. So her schedule's a little bit tight and being the week before Thanksgiving, we were trying to get everything in this week. But.
Was there a board member?
There was not.
Committee?
No. And when I had reached out to Andy about this, because she has to be let out of her contract in Rattleboro, I had asked about having a follow up interview if needed with board members. And we just recommended her for hire because of her recommendations and qualifications.
Well, I, this is a surprise to me. I don't know about how the other board members feel, but it's a lot of money and 37 kids and we already have now health counselor and you already have a reset person. It's a lot of counseling here.
Now, she's already, she's, has she already been released from her contract?
No. I know that I've offered her the position, she's accepted the position. I don't think that she has resigned from her position yet.
When I, do you want to speak to that?
I spoke to her and she has, her school is aware of it and she is willing to work with them to the end of this calendar year. And then she would join Angela's team January 3rd.
Okay. Because on one hand, you know, I'm aware of concern here, but I also don't want to strand somebody if they left the position on the assumption that we were going to approve of.
From my understanding too, just the brief discussion that I've had with Andy is she would be a really good fit and he would be lucky to have her.
Let's continue this discussion. I see, Krista, you have your hand up.
Kathy mentioned that we already have, could you help me understand what the counselor's doing that we?
Krista, I may ask you to say that much more slowly because you're breaking up.
And if she shuts her camera off, that might help.
Yeah. If you shut your camera off, that's often gives you more bandwidth.
Can you hear me now?
Very clearly.
Kathy mentioned that we already have a counselor at the school that provides mental health counseling. So could you just clarify what this candidate would be doing in this role, what services they'd be providing to our students?
So Krista, we don't have a counselor. We have a clinician who, that used to be funded through, we share that with Saxons River and also the Special Education Department. So sometimes on IEP plans, it can be written in that the student receives clinical support. And that's something that our clinician that we have two days a week does, but he has to do lots of case management. So it's from 7:45 to 3 o'clock. He's not seeing kids. There's lots of case management and individual plans that students are on and that's more from a clinical perspective. I don't know what you know historically, but that used to be a position that we contracted out through HCRS. But it was really tough getting consistent people year to year. And we had like a different HCRS counselor every year that I was here prior to this year. And so our clinician now actually left HCRS and then is employed by the SU. So, and funded by us Saxons River and the Special Education Department. So we don't have counseling services on Monday, Tuesday, or Friday. And that's what the counselor would do is pick up those counseling positions. I don't want anyone to think that our restorative practices teacher is in any way a counselor because he's not. He works at restoring relationships and building relationships among students and helping students through conflict. So I mean, I could give you some different scenarios of what our restorative practices teacher does, but he's not a counselor and that is not one of the qualifications that comes with that position. And so when a student is in need of some sort of counseling service, Doug, our clinician now has been sort of trying to pick that up, but his, his schedule is so booked up. So it's, he really can't see any more students than he does now. So his.
So just to, so just to clarify, are there students currently in need of mental health services that are unable to obtain them? And hiring this person would help students obtain those mental health services?
Absolutely. Yep. Yes.
How many students are involved?
So typically like our clinician wouldn't just see a student on the fly, right? Like so if a student is having difficulty or something happened over the weekend, unless our clinician already has an established case with them and consent from families to treat, and I put that like in air quotes because it's like a consent to treat them, he does not work with those students. And there's also like a social emotional learning component where like this counselor would go into the classrooms to teach social emotional lessons. And that's not something that a clinician does. So when a student needs some sort of counseling on a Monday, Tuesday, or Friday, I do my best, the nurse does their best or her best. And then if harm has happened and there needs to be some repair, then that's something that the restorative practices teacher does.
What percentage of these 37 kids are seeing a counselor?
I can.
A school counselor?
Who would be seeing the school counselor? I can pull up the schedule from last year for who saw the counselor. And actually at the beginning of this year, when we didn't have a counselor, we prioritized those students. And I think that we gave like two of them to the clinician because we knew that that student couldn't go without any sort of counseling support. But then the other students were just sort of like, just as a monitoring basis. Looking for our schedule from last year.
Why are you looking? I got a question for you on this. And I know that we run into situations where we simply are mandated to provide counseling services. This, you know, unfortunately it's not one of the, it's not a particularly optional thing sometimes. I might think it ought to. We've picked contract, in a lot of cases, we used to contract with HCRS. And it was my impression that HCRS classes of fairly significant premium over what a direct hire would be. Can you tell us sort of what the overhead difference is between hiring HCRS versus hiring direct?
This is, this is a little bit tense, but I want to say it was probably 30% higher.
That's what I had. So I'm just saying that, in other words, what, one of the things we want to look at is whether or not this add is actually in some ways a backdoor reduction.
Yes.
So I wanted to be clear on that. The second question is, counseling services are quasi-medical.
Right.
And in, if you were in a mental health service and you dealt with a lay counselors, Medicare, Medicaid billable thing. We have this large pile of Medicaid money that was not appropriately recognized or allocated. And we had then gaining, but not very informed discussion about that last night. Is this something that would be properly allocated, that would be properly funded or allocated out of that money? Because I think that would, that would help a lot of people's concerns.
Some of the problems that you'd have, I certainly think if there was no stipulations, you certainly could access that money and it would be appropriate. But my understanding is that at some time, the boards got together and voted and, and kind of fixed this.
Having been on board for 25 years, I don't remember any such, but I did hear that said last night. I mean, I've been through five superintendents and I'm just trying to remember who this would have been that did this. I would love to see minutes that is stipulated that because lagging that documentation, I have concern about what might or might not be available to us.
Right. And Chris had mentioned that this was even when he was a principal. So this happened.
Will, to, without being untactable about it, Chris has memories that don't necessarily always show up in the record. And so I would like this to be at least reviewed.
Sure.
Because it would, I think, again, this would help people's concerns if there isn't a way to fund this instead of out of direct funds.
Sure. Okay.
So to Kathy's question, 45%.
Okay, 45.
45% of our students saw the counselor last year.
So a dozen, then, oh no, we got 30 odd.
17 students last year saw the counselor.
Sorry, could I say that again?
45% saw the counselor last year when I'm looking at the.
17 kiddos.
17 students when I look. And then there were four times throughout the week that the counselor went into classrooms to teach second step, which is our social emotional curriculum that we've used, which is not being implemented by anyone right now.
Is that a mandatory program? I can't remember. Because I mean, it's part of, it's part of the recommended curriculum across the SU, is it not?
So those, so at the beginning of this year, when we didn't have a counselor, we gave some of those, I want to say two of those children to our clinician. And then, you know, he got consent from the families and, you know, there's like an interview process with the families and things where a counselor in the school can just see anybody at any time for any reason to help them through something.
So what are the 15 kids doing now that weren't assigned to a clinician? Are they just winning their way?
They're being loved by their teacher and their principal and their nurse and.
That's all I was hoping.
Receiving some support.
It's also the families they should be working with too.
I think that having, not having a counselor takes away that bridge between like, you know, a lot of times I'll be calling about something that isn't necessarily administrative or like your typical sort of administrator hat on, which is hard, I think, sometimes for families to differentiate that I'm calling in a counseling sort of way and a let's work together sort of way. And I think that that bridge is missing here. You know, because that's not something that Adam or our clinician does.
Can I say something else? It's Krista.
Thank you, Krista.
Sorry, I just want to share just, just like a personal experience of how this is effective. So I was a student at Grafton and I received once a week counseling with the school counselor for three years from third grade to sixth grade. And I had no idea that students currently didn't have the services available to them. And I think the only reason I was able to do well was because I got that mental health help there that I needed at school. And I'm sure a lot of students, families don't have the resources or the abilities to take them to private counselors. And mental health is so impactful in the classroom, conflict and everything. And it's just, I had no idea that there wasn't a counselor and I just think it's incredibly important that as long as we can fund it, that there, that there is one.
I'm going to share a thought if I might. We have two real issues. I do, you know, we do recognize that we have student body today as opposed to one 23 years Family dynamics are different. There's a lot more, more families in crisis and we might understand that that is an issue. With that said, we also are a very small, very isolated school with a variable student population and a sort of a built in mandate because of our student count to cut costs by a minimum of that 3% a year, no matter, you know, whatever else we do because of our student count. So my concern here is, I want to make, I want to be extremely supportive of this. On the other hand, I am concerned that, about sustainability. You know, I don't like hiring somebody and then showing you, you know, the following year, gee, I don't know if we've got room for it in the budget. And in a school decides 3% cuts, aren't really 3% cuts, they're 8% cuts. And it's, in its course for the years, no cuts because staffing is like that. So.
I mean, we are required by law to have a guidance counselor.
Well, that's where rather is coming to. I think we are, this may be a sacred cow because we may, we actually could be required to do it. At the same time, it may mean that there's some other cattle in the room that we've got to look at.
Trade off someone, yeah.
So just, you know, I'm inclined to support this, but I want to be very clear about the conditions.
I guess I need some more information on that.
Just that, we, we are, we are really in a position where we have certain mandated required things. I think this is one of them. I think there's a real argument to be made that doing it directly versus HCRS makes a ton of sense. On the other hand.
Well, that's something different. That's clinician.
Okay. But my point is simply, my point here is that you're in a bit of, you're a bit of between a rock and a hard place just because of the demographics. Because we're, we're, we're getting money for, what's the adjusted student counts in, is it like 50 ish?
Well, no, the, the headcount last year for equivalent heads was 85.3.
Right.
And this year, if the law holds, and Jim, I don't know whether you had a chance to call this, I'll call it, the state ed department. But this year, if the law holds, we'll have a headcount of 83.21, which is 3% down from what it was last year.
And it will continue to go down until either our headcount goes up or we have a budget that's basically half of what we have today. So this is the reason why I'm, I'm trying to just sort of, you know, this goes over a long period of time, Angela. This is not like something where you're going to have to cut tomorrow to get your budget in half, but over the next 20 years, that's where it's going to end here. And so the question becomes how you get there. And it's just a caution about, about that hardest ceiling that you're facing on your fiscal, on the fiscal side.
I strongly support hiring her because the mental health of children is worth more than anything.
I'm, if we are at a point where we can, we're ready to have a vote on this, if I want, if I don't cut anybody off, are we ready to have a vote on this? As good as we're going to be?
I'm concerned about the money.
I, yeah, all right.
I know the need. I've been there, done counseling for over 35 years. And my caseload was at one time 500 kids and I'm one person in four schools. And here she's got a job with 37 kiddos. And you've got the claim of the crop that you're, you're hiring comes with great respect and I have no doubt about that. I'm concerned about the cost. I'm on the fence right now. Is it in our budget at this point?
Well, this is, we had, we did have some things we've not filled, right? We still, and I don't know where we're at with that.
Ask that question again?
We have, we still have unfilled positions and we're not, we're not fully filled, right? We have, we still have like the after school, something or other and something else.
Yeah, but that's funded through.
Okay. So this is, this is out of our pocket.
The counselor is out of our pocket.
Okay.
But the after school program is funded through the 21st SEC.
All right. I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find you some, I'm trying to find you some flow here Angela, that's all.
I think you need to investigate that money that you talked about last night, the pool money that was on the Medicaid or Medicare or whatever they bill. Because I know I had to do that too when I was counseling.
What I would suggest we do is we go forward with this appointment and then advise the fiscal office to see if that money would apply. You know, if the body is needed, the body is needed, but it's just a way to pay for it other than through putting a small dent in our budget, I'd like to try to do that. That seemed like a reasonable compromise. It may still not be sufficient, but it's, now it's the best they got.
I can't believe you have that much money just sitting there.
Oh, that.
That hasn't been allocated.
I mean, wasn't our surplus last year?
That's a small piece of the money that's floating around, right Jim?
They didn't know what they had.
This is a small piece.
Actually, one of us did know, except on saying that we did and I kept on being told that we didn't. So I just, just.
So right now in our budget, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, we have thirty-nine, three eighty-four budgeted for this counselor.
Okay.
Okay. So I think Nicole, what did you say would be our cost? I want to say I, I'd say forties.
So we're really only talking a couple thousand over what we have.
I mean, are we talking about five thousand dollars?
Right here, we have a new position.
So we're, I'm recommending somebody for hire this year, but I think that's a different, that's for next year, that's a different, that's different. So.
And we'll get, and we'll get to that difference shortly, believe me.
Forty-four? Forty, it would be forty-six thousand two hundred twelve dollars.
So forty-six as opposed to thirty odd that we had in the, in the budget. So basically it's eight to ten grand difference.
And it was a slight increase from what I sent you guys when I originally sent the agenda and the information because she sent transcripts showing that she was masters plus thirty. So we're talking almost seven thousand dollars from what you have in the budget.
Okay, well, to, to be clear, we have hired people, you know, we've hired people that were, we've allocated money for physicians and then hired somebody that either was lower or this particular year generally been a little bit higher than, than what we had originally budgeted because they were better people with deeper skill sets. To some extent, this falls in that parameter. So, you know, just, just so people aren't, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, it's not as much as it might have been, it's within the parameter of what you're saying.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't, I didn't, we didn't talk about anybody else's salary when we were approving last time. So I just wasn't prepared for this conversation, like when we hired the nets on Christine, right?
I'm, I'm fine with that part of just saying, you know, we're, we're, we're just, people are just going to be watching paint a little bit with concerns about being certain that we can do this without compromising programming.
I have a question for Hardy. I know with our select board budget and employees, we're dealing with the COLA, is that coming to play with the salaries here, the cost of living?
Yes, but Jim has put in, actually what it's for contract is in there for next year.
Yeah. You're, you're, having been on the negotiations, you're a little over four for Raythor Ed, you're for, for Perez, it's close to the eight and change. So that's what was negotiated and we did it partly because we can hire anybody for the, for this, for the clerk salaries if you're paying for Perez. Again, I think that we're getting a little off or tracked. The question is, I need, I need an up or down to this woman tonight. And I'm, and I suspect everybody's kind of got their mind made up where they're going to go on this. So if we can, for the record, go to a vote, I'd kind of like to. Krista, what say you about the hiring of our point six counselor? Oh, by the way, I need the, I need a dollar amount that we're going to, that we're offering as part of the.
Like Nicole said, forty-six thousand two hundred twelve. Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I have an eye from Krista. What say you, Hardy?
Based on the discussion and the fact that Nicole has mentioned that they have talked to her and her school is aware of what's going on here, I'm going to say yes.
All right. And, and you Kathy?
Yeah, it's forty-six two twelve and that's for the counseling, but there's another piece of the title one that's separate.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if, I, I, I was actually.
I'm not happy, I'm not happy with the process, I'm not happy with the money.
Don't have to be happy with the.
Just have that on the record.
I think you got that on the record. All right, well, happiness here too, but it's a yes for me.
Yes.
All right, we have unanimity on that. Thank you for putting up with peppered questions and thank you all for asking them. We had, it said resignation music teacher, we're going to do last old business discussion playground update on, or discussion action, excuse me, update on playground, do we have any movement on this issue? So I said that if we didn't have.
We haven't had another playground meeting since.
All right, when are we scheduled? Because I'm planning to attend.
Looking at the schedule, do we, do we have one on the schedule?
Not that I'm aware of.
Let's see if we.
Been waiting on Miracle to get back.
I know, and he's been out too, but I, but as soon as he, you know, first reading.
Yeah, we're supposed to have a playground committee meeting on the second, but we hadn't heard back from Miracle, which is the company for the playground. And so we really had nothing to.
It would be a reasonable thing to say we are anticipating their availability should they still wish to be part of the process. That usually if there's a salesperson there, they're going to understand that they are going to show up.
Community member who was working on that.
Yeah, if they're not responding, then we may not want to deal with it.
Well, that's, I was going to say, there's not a salesperson in the world that got a letter like that that doesn't know he loses a job if he doesn't show up. So we should be pretty good. Because I, I, as I said, I'm, I'm determined that in our, our report to the, report to the community, that we're going to be able to tell them what we're doing on the, on the playground. I've heard more questions on that than anything else we've done. All right, that's where we're at, transportation. I put this on, and this is just in the effort to put on the record that I've been getting some complaints about buses leaving early and not, I don't know what the story is there, but this time of year, parents get really itchy about letting the kids hang out for half an hour at the, wherever the pickup is. And so this is usually when we get an avalanche of these things.
I talked to transportation and it seems that everything is on time and.
Well, on time, I don't think it's a problem, I think leaving early was the problem.
Leaving by leaving early.
In other words, person, you know, bus supposed to hit, hit point, you know, point X, wherever, and pick up kids, but, but are not, in fact, they're not late, what they are is they're leaving before the kids get there. Some parents that don't want to put their kiddos out.
I met with Renee and our bus driver last week and was informed that the schedule that was sent out is what is being followed.
Okay, well, just if you wouldn't mind just saying, too, leaving too early is just as bad as arriving too late. So we really do need to, you know, have people be aware, especially this time of year. Last year, year before, I heard the same complaints from the same people, from the same locations. I just, you know, let's not have that be a hassle.
So they're getting picked up too early?
No, the bus, the bus is, bus is showing up and then, you know, going on to its next, it's just.
Next stop.
Next stop, and it's happening too early and the kids are getting on the bus. And I, I don't have an eight-year-old program, I don't know.
It would be beneficial to know exactly the stop.
Yeah.
And who, because I haven't, kids who take the bus in the morning, I think this is a morning thing, they're getting off of the bus. So they're not like missing the bus, right? It's not like parents are dropping off their child and being like, oh, I don't know, the bus was already gone by the time we got there. Like I haven't heard that.
That was what I had heard and I, and again, I, what do I know? So.
I guess if you, if you get those communications, if you send them to me, then I can talk with Renee.
That would be ideal.
Or just our driver directly.
All right, well, I promised I would bring it up, so here I am doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, all right. So now on to seven, let's see. Budget discussion. We finalized, actually to my surprise, finalized a budget for the, for the, for the SU last night. I have a copy of it for those that have, you know, have interest in banging through forty pages. And what's the, what was the bottom line numbers, guys? What's the, what's the, what's both the bottom line bit, but did percentage wise change? And what's our allocation change for this district?
It was twenty million two.
Yes, but it was ten million one, or two hundred pounds. It was up a little bit from what it was version four.
Yes. And, and the assessment piece for.
Grafton.
Grafton is down, down sixteen thousand four forty.
Right, three hundred and ten thousand one oh seven.
Yep.
Which actually could be a little bit less later depending on what we do with the surplus that is generated from the twenty-two audit related to WNESU, which we're looking at possibly being a total of six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
And, and that would either, that, there's both discussion about where the, how, how much that goes back to the district versus a project.
Right, we don't know the answer yet.
As a must do that we haven't quite worked, got our hands around yet, that'd be a good summary of that.
Yeah, but we, we need to finalize the audit so we know the exact number and then we have to decide, right Jim, what we're going to do with it.
Yes.
One, one, in, in the ideal world, when, when are we expecting to get the audit report, by the way?
She, she spent two days this weekend and she was plowing along. I think we've, we've caught up with a lot of our journal entries that had to be done for twenty-two.
Yeah.
We'll see, it'll take a month for them to crank it.
Okay, because I mean, in an ideal world, we have that audit report going into, before we finalize budgets and I recognize why we're not, but that will be the expectation going forward, am I correct on that?
Yes, absolutely. You know, the, the one thing, because it was like a million, I think it was a million two, that, that is the balance from twenty-one. Now, there's some question about, you know, and I want her to finish twenty-two so we can really lock in what the money is.
You know what I'm saying, because some of that, I think some of that parent, is actually the Medicaid money as well as.
Yes, yes.
As well, as well as non-assessments, as well as non-assessments that were billed but never paid to.
Right, that's right.
Middle school.
Yep.
Which is at least a hundred and eighty thousand in round figures.
Yep.
So, all right. Question I had is, I'm not, are we at a point where we can at least outline what the budget looks like and instruct a review sort of expenditures again with the, and I'm, I'm not sure we're, not sure kind of where we're at on this and what your thoughts are of, particularly I'm asking my budget committee members and probably asking parties specifically.
Um, well.
I don't want to put anybody on the spot.
I think we probably, we just received this, Jim can take us through some of it and I would say we digest it and then discuss it.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting in a little more detail.
Sure, all right. I, I like the plan. All right, well, Jim, you're on.
So the top sections, top two sections.
Yep.
Deal with the salaries and benefits. And we've cranked through the step increase that teachers get. We've cranked through the salary schedule, the new salary schedule. And again, it also shows the new position in your, in your budget.
This position we talked about tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
So.
That was going to be a question people were going to ask.
So, so with all of that, you're, you're up on, on salaries thirty-five thousand. And again, that's based on the settlement, it's a negotiation.
Yes, percentage, uh, it, it, what, yes, what's, is the staff changes for relative to last year in this kind of way?
The one, the one change that I think Stacy had made, there were, there were, because she did this, I think, at all of the elementary schools where she put some psych services at each school, am I right?
Would that be Doug Francis?
We've always had two, two ways of a clinician, we have had for a while.
Yeah.
So that's not, we pay for that out of our budget, but we sort of share that position with special ed.
Okay.
With Stacy.
So do you get special ed reimbursement?
No.
No, this is not, this is not special ed per se, even though they're divided up. So, so they're divided, right Doug Francis?
Yeah, we put him down as a point four.
And, and that typically is, I mean, he's not treating special ed per se.
Not only, no.
So.
Never remember.
No.
So anyways, Stacy has made some modifications with some of her staff.
So I'm not sure what the exact percentage is for Stacy, Nicole, do you know? Like, so it doesn't say actually what Doug's is, but his might be like, well, he's here two days a week, so it's definitely point four. But I don't know what he is at Saxon River. If he's a point four there and a point two with Stacy, but somehow his salary is split between Grafton.
That's right.
Saxon River and her budget.
Well, I'm anticipating having Stacy at the next SU meeting. We've got a sort of laundry list of questions anyway. And I think one of them is probably going to be staff that have at least dotted a line to her that are assigned to different buildings that we're picking up, I think would be a useful conversation generally. And, and since we'll have the opportunity to have that before we meet as, as our board, it'll give us a little, you know, we'll have some.
So maybe now in our next meeting, there's that meeting.
Right, so we'll have a chance to have more hard information on that because I think it's, it's hard for you to speculate what somebody else is doing, that's not fair to you. I wouldn't ask anybody to do that.
He is here two days a week, Saxon's over three, and I think there's like this understanding that he could be pulled.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else from special ed that comes here regularly, like Perez or anything like that?
Not Perez, but like related services, so PTOG and speech.
Or anything.
They, they come.
Okay.
We share them. And that's solely funded through special education.
Right.
Once those students are identified as special.
Right, and that's special ed is a direct, you know, that's not the percentage formula we get, we get the, you know, we get the bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you mentioned Stacy, who is Stacy in another auditor?
No, Stacy is the special ed director.
Oh, okay.
Director of student services.
Yeah, you're going to get to know Stacy real well.
So the health insurance piece went up twelve point seven percent and that's cranked in here as well.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Twelve point seven percent for the health insurance. And I also want to point out to you, if you would look at line twenty-five, disability insurance.
Yep.
And I'm not sure what happened.
I was going to ask you about that.
But it went from twenty-one down to three and, and that's not a mistake, it's just.
I know what that is.
Twenty-one was probably a mistake.
No, twenty-one was, the twenty-one was a mistake. It's actually money that was supposed to go to the other insurance pool. Jim, I'm, I'm positive of that. And I remember when, I think it happened, it was like last, it was, it was during the unpleasantness when we, when we had a change of folks.
So you're down in a few other areas on the benefit side. So, you know, between the thirty-five increase in salaries and a decrease of ten on the benefits, you're not looking too bad, you know, because again, I just quickly weigh in here on some of the other. Your tuition, I plugged in, I think it was twenty thousand, I had no idea.
I, I think that's high. I think that number's high based on the, the number of kids that will have tuition next year, it probably should be at 20, about 280,000.
Well, and again, I'm guessing, but what?
I just went through the kids that are going to be leaving.
Yes.
The eighth grade, the ones that are coming in from the sixth grade, which is 10.
And I'm not sure.
You've got to have 14 kids.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I plugged in.
Everybody's everywhere else.
But I plugged them in at 20 and, and that 20 may be high.
There's a confession. Every year, every district school that tuitions kids has, as a general rule, this, us and the Westminster have always estimated the number of kids going to, being tuitioned a little high, usually by one or two. And that's simply because schools are small, when they get in trouble, you don't want to be, you don't want to go into deficit spending plus 7% interest rate or whatever. And so, when we get to the budget and have that discussion, the question is, do we go with a number we're fairly certain of, or do we add one or two just because? Because people do show up here with, with a middle school or TOE and sometimes they actually make these places specific, if they get tuitioned, so.
You know, and.
20, 20 is high though, I don't remember being that high, I thought we, I thought it was like two.
When I say 20, 20,000 per student.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
14 kids.
Now, I, I just want to tell you, last year, you spent 324.
Yep.
This year, you had 350 in the budget and again, at that increased rate, you got 326. If there's another number you want, I'll put it in.
Yeah, I, I agree with you to that. I think though, the 324 for last year, some of that related to the mistuition, there was something from a year before that got booked in there, so it was higher than it really was.
Yeah.
What a show.
You know, I saw that from the warrants that I do, I found it written into that.
Right.
So, I imagine that when, that you have the list, right?
Yes, yes.
Because there's, there's, there's 12 12 graders right now?
Right.
And then?
Yeah, but we don't need to count them because we're just talking the tuition that we get charged for.
Right, but then they're, oh, just seventh and eighth grade?
Just seventh, eighth grade, yeah.
Yeah, seventh and eighth grades, all we're, we're dealing with.
12 graders were covered up, high school got that revenue, whether the kids went there or not.
Yep, yep.
I got that from that spreadsheet that's, that's done.
Oh.
I think that's the first thing.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right here.
All right. So, anyway, what are, what are the other items we need to touch on this?
Well, the, the oil, I just want to mention, the oil, I put 10 grand more in.
Yeah.
And again, it's a gas.
Well, we're seeing numbers in the four-ish range, high four right now, so something we might chat about at some point is whether solar panels might be a really good idea.
So, the other thing is, like, we just guessed this like a little bit off, but we just got our electricity bill, it was 1,600 dollars.
What I did with your electricity. What I did to, for a number, I went back to Green Mountain Power.
Yeah.
I got the, a 12-month span and so I, I kind of averaged that.
Okay.
And I hope, you know, when I, EverSource is just talking about jacking up in New Hampshire again, and I don't know how much.
There's a state regulatory mandate that puts some sort of a cap, but they're supposed to give you, give you an estimate of what your yearly number is.
Yeah.
And they're supposed to stick to it, though a lot of people get notices saying that they didn't, including businesses in our area, Green Foundation, I believe. So, I don't, you know, then, you want to check with somebody like them or some of the other places?
As I, as I say, the only thing I worry about with Green Mountain Power is they just lost their biggest customer, Global Foundries.
Right.
Oh, right.
And is that going to reflect back on us? I mean, in a negative way? I don't know.
One of the things we may have discussion on at some point is going to the IP piece directly, the, you know, largest one in central New England is 10 miles from here.
Wow.
And we probably have that chat.
Yeah, yeah.
We may have a much bigger chat about this whole business, not, not so much contracting with these guys that want to give us 5% of their profit in order to stick a bunch of solar panels, but actually doing it ourselves, because that's, that's a capital budgets thing, I'll assume that our capital budgets people will be on that starting fairly soon. I want that, you know, the high school, frankly, even this, and, and the Westminster campus have tons of land and we should be thinking about that.
I have a question on the oil, do you have, do you have a contract that's?
We are paying four bucks a gallon.
That's pretty nice.
Wow. We paid 2.5 last year.
Yeah, it won't be that.
I'd be more than that.
And this is with Coda?
I'm not sure.
Do you have, have a Dead River and some other outfit, I forget that, we have a different one than the rest, because I try to get this to be a unified thing and we have some funkiness with our tank that makes it difficult and I, and on like in the circle, is I think it's just, just the nozzle or some such idiotic thing.
Yeah.
And it would be useful to find out if by changing it, we could be doing a bulk buy.
Yes.
Because I believe that you've got three providers and that's nuts for a district this size or the SU this size.
Absolutely.
So, it would be useful to look at that.
What does the size change here, for 500 gallons or 350 or 1,000?
Oh, I, I don't remember the size, but I just remember the intake was different than the other ones and that was an issue, because I, I had this conversation with Edie back in the day.
So, I derive this, or just, I don't, 12 months, I don't remember, but I just remember that was something. And last year, Gary thought we did, last year was 12.7.
That was just for a month, Kathy, just a month.
13,900, that was for a month?
16.
Well, I, I think you've got, you've got a tag for how much a gallon, for what?
Four.
For a flat for next year?
For a flat. Oh, excuse me, for this year?
Yeah, but for next year, for the, the current budget.
I, I, it's a, it's an absolute guess.
That's all right.
So, so, I put 20,000 and, and it may be, it may be low.
All right, well, I mean, I.
I wonder if it's, I wonder what is different this year that's pulling more electricity, if it's, I don't know, do those take a lot of electricity?
Well, then you should, but the, the, your, your big items here, besides, we ought to get, we had change lights at some point.
Yep.
And it, it paid for itself, is, is the fuel thing, you know, I used to write the flats, the oil industry magazine, and my data is telling me that while gas, well, barrel prices for crude is going to go down, possibly significantly, there is no refined capacity for, for diesel or home oil, and it just, there is none in North America right now. So, chances are that's going to be, it's going to be sufficient that people actually are going to be switching to propane and we ought to be thinking about whether or not we need to have multiple, some sort of multiple option here.
Yes, because of the projection, and this is wild, but the projection is that it's going to go off to five.
I'm saying five now.
Well, but, but.
Yeah, same here too.
Yeah, why, I mean, I, I.
More than that, actually.
Did you, are you? Yeah. So, and I would be thinking that might be a more realistic number, unfortunately.
So, I mean, who do you think that for, changing this 20?
I would say it should go up, if we spent 14,553 last year, it's probably going to be more than 20.
25?
27? At least 22, at least. I just, you, this is such a tiny place, little error is really bad.
Oh, yeah, there's no question.
So, so in some ways, I'm almost prefer to have a higher number.
I do.
Okay.
I want to be sure.
Yeah, I, I would put in maybe even, at least 30.
Okay.
30.
30, put in 30, yeah.
We already adopted that.
This is the 22, 23 budgets, one we're in. And this is the one we're talking about.
It sure is.
This is the one we're going to take.
Right, and that's just showing you a three-year trend.
Okay, because we went down and it's going up, so we're going to have enough money.
At 10.
The, the, you're going at the fuel oil over three years, I was asking the question, and yeah, we, we had, we had one of the bigger dips you'll ever see, because of COVID, they literally had oil on barges, they couldn't get rid of, we're selling it at a loss, so we, we did great, but that, that, those days are gone. It's, you know, a great wild card. All right, so. Go ahead.
I wonder if our thermostats, are they programmed to have the temperature go down at night?
A question asked, Gary, they think they, they absolutely should be, nope.
Yes, they should be.
They should be.
There's also, if they aren't, there's grant money available to get those fixed.
Get thermostats that program, I mean, those are programmable, so should.
Right. So.
It's worth, it's worth checking.
Yeah. It also may be that during some of the work we've done the last year, you know, with all the water here and elsewhere, that we may have some insulation issues.
Concerned about the oil tank, is it in the ground because the oil, are supposed to be in the ground?
They do the, I think they do the pressure testing as a normal compliance, if it's in the ground.
Well, let's, let's put a circle around that, as an Ask Gary question, and then repeat a larger question in terms of, you know, capital, strategic stuff and maybe even Esther stuff, so we should find out.
Gary's pretty on top of that.
Well, the reason is, we're having some trouble with the, getting approvals for the, whatever replacement renovation of our fuel system, because we're not asking for enough money. And so, if they're saying, gee, you need to cold plate this by doing, you know, gas conversion or something, amen, I'm all for it, baby. So, you know, let's just find out what that looks like. That's a note for Andy when he's back, by the way.
Well, I found out, we went to heat pumps.
Well, that's the other thing, is, is this is a great building for heat pumps, because you actually got paramount wall and you've got, and, and they're in a location where you get a lot of air circulation. So, that, that's a very good, thank you for mentioning that.
That could be in the year, that group of audience.
Well, that's also an Esther issue kind of thing, so again, let's put that on the list as well. You know, if they're saying we're not going to spend this money on, on conversion, by God, we can accommodate that, that's what I think.
No, 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 it's true, you could.
All right, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm making a joke, but I'm not, you know? All right. So, what else we got?
You know, the, the, well, there's two other items that, and that is specific building projects that, that should get done and I haven't seen anything and I don't know what, if anybody's generating.
We got painting here at some point, right?
Say that again, the outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, and painting, what's, do we have a, any sort of, before we left, did Gary give you any wisdom about, you know, the seroso that are, like about where you might be with any of that, you know?
No, I know the last that we talked about was potentially doing half and half and I think we all were in agreement that we didn't want to do that.
Yeah, the setup cost is 40% on any project like this and you just automatically have raised a whole bunch of money.
Did one or something?
Yeah, it was to do 15 and 15, 15,000, like do it, having done it, like in the summer and then do it again next summer, the other half, we had said we didn't want to do that.
Let's put a circle around that as an item to address, maybe this is something, you know, again, I'm a big believer in sinking funds, where you have money to, to do that and you.
And I think Andy had wanted us to, the, we were getting, trying to blink right now. We were getting an inspection, right?
Yes.
They came from, that's the same person who did my home inspection, he walked to the door, I was like, hey! Well, Lanchet, and they were coming to do an inspection and so Andy was saying to hold off.
Yep.
Talking about whether or not.
What's they going to inspect?
We're talking about.
The whole school there.
Excuse me, I just want to, I got a question. The, the, we're going over whether or not, on the capital side, we didn't paint the building and the question is, are we going to include, are we going to deal with that as part of the budget either this year or next? How are we going to deal with it? Because we can't just let it sit, because you'll end up replacing half the classrooms.
The other thing that, that I want to make sure is covered somehow, somewhere, is the contracted services for facilities.
Yeah.
Smoke detectors, boiler tune-up, you know, those items, I just want to make sure we're tight on and have sufficient monies to, to do.
Did we, did we not do that in the past? I don't ever remember having this as a line item, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yep. It certainly should be, because you want to make sure that stuff gets done, you know, the, whatever fire inspection type of stuff has to get.
Yeah, you used to have somebody come around, like on the lighting, for example.
Somebody that came?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, well, well, again, an item just to circle, but I think we're, I think it's somewhere in.
Capital needs assessment, happened on Monday, 10:24.
There you go.
Yeah.
So, not only did it happen to happen within a month, so, good, good. All right. So, now, if there are questions on budget items, what I'd like people to do is essentially, you know, bend them through me or through Parti, who will then in turn run them to Jim, that's sort of the rule on all district boards, if we don't have everybody ask. And if there are questions, you know, if folks are having trouble following this, because not everybody is, you know, a spreadsheet wizard, and includes huge risks, although you might be one, please let me know and, you know, if I'm, you know, and I know Parti's always been tremendous about this, but I want to be sensitive at his time, but I will spend time with anyone that wants me to, because when you're doing this, I have to go a little bit. Okay?
And I'm sure Angela and I will at some point in time get together to preview in depth, you know, of some changes that you want to make, because the one, as I, I say this continually, is that the, the inflation factor that you're seeing in your homes with many of the items you purchase, the school is as well.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know that we've seen any increases, dramatic increases in the supplies area, so.
I, well, though I think we, yeah, we need to actually take a peek at that, I think we've, some of the other, some of the other, the SU was extremely, extremely needy when it came to supplies, that supply line blew up this year. But we just want to make sure that we've got stuff, the main thing is fixed budget, you don't have a lot of wiggle room, tiny little district, you know, a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there actually matters, so let's make sure we've got it. And this is a good board and we don't indulge in wishful thinking about what the numbers would be.
Is it possible for you, you know, like you had something about where we are after, through November?
Yes, sure.
For the other?
Yeah.
Could you pull something together for?
Sure.
Yes.
Maybe a little easier to pull together?
Thank you very much for asking that, to be honest. You know, where I had an issue like last night, where it didn't tie in well, somebody says, were I half million dollars over? And I, I will say this, the, some of the accounts and how they were structured were very difficult to put together, and I mean, it just, it did not sandwich well.
Well, it is my hope, I know it's going to be hard for another few years, but eventually I'd like to see that sort of three-year tracking, so you can actually read what.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because you shouldn't have those gigantic swings when you look at this place.
No, not at all.
You shouldn't have them at that place. Those of us are wrong.
Well, part of the problem, though, is all the contract hirings through that company I told you about, which is all special ed.
Well, that's why there's going to be a very interesting conversation coming up. I wouldn't want it to be, you know, but that conversation's going to happen, and it's going to...
And I don't know how that 3,000...
Priscilla, on her own, will make sure it's an interesting conversation. Because the boiler may be, it may be sufficient. I mean, but you probably, we're just talking about...
So I'm, I'm talking about how like specific repairs
Yeah.
is up to 34 from this like 7.
Yeah.
And then this contracted services got zeroed out. So are we just saying that that's, we're just going to put it all together, repairs?
You're right. No, no, it's got to be separate, so...
But there's...
And that's where I think somewhere, either the custodian or someone will have to develop the budget for, you know, the, and even the playground. I mean, the playground, I don't know if you use some wood chips or something of that nature, but I, it gets forgotten.
Well, part of it won't get as forgotten, because if we're going to do the big reno of that, of that space, I think we'll have a, we should have both a consultation and an estimate as demands. All right. I think we've done this, unless somebody's got more questions, and I'm mindful of the time. We are, we have a D3 item. I don't think it got sent to people, however, and this is the, this is the item we mentioned last night, the...
It should have been in the email that I sent with the agenda.
Did everybody see, I want to be sure you did.
Yeah.
The policy, you got, everybody got that? Okay, I wasn't, I, you know, I've spent so much time with it, I didn't even bother to look to see if it was there. So are there any questions on this? This has been vetted by, vetted by the team. There was some questions about whether necessary legal checking was done. And we did, we did model it on the, on the state recommended version of the policy, and Ricky vetted it personally and walked through it with his folks. So that's what I've got for you in the way of information. Are people in the mood to approve it?
I'm approving.
All right, let's, I heard that as a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay, questions are, this is the time.
With the computer and the network stuff and the internet, and assuming kids are on their computers and they're on the internet, blah, 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 blah. Who really supervises where they're at and what they're doing on that computer? But they're not going to a site that's...
I have teachers and me. I have a, I have a program, Go Guardian, it's right here, and I can see what they've gone on. I can look at flagged activity. And like who was flagged and for what, and it sort of shows. And I remind them of our acceptable use policy and show them that I can see it. I actually have a presentation that I give to them about how I can see everything.
Yeah, I was just curious, who enforces what, you know, that they're doing?
Well, I know between...
So the teacher's during class, but then, of course, things are missed, and I can go, I'm Go Guardian.
And Rick also has, Rick also has a master for the SU domain.
You can see everybody.
Yeah, so if you're going to go anyplace, don't go on one of our computers, please, and certainly don't do it while you're, and even on your own, if you're, if you like through Google, is the SU version of Google, be a bad idea. So there you are. Any further questions? I'm going to call the, call, count on this. What say you, Hardy Merrill?
Aye.
What say you, Andy? What say you? Krista?
Aye.
All right, then we got all ayes for the, for that. Going to do director's comments. For back TV's purposes, we're going to go into what I expect to be a 10, 15-minute chat, an executive session, and I'll be looking after director's comments to promote to that effect. So everybody understand what we're doing? All righty. So I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss item 62 resignation of music teacher. We are asking for an executive session because the, because the interests of the school and the teacher may be adversely affected. So is somebody going to make me that motion? I hear that motion moved. So Krista, what say you?
Put those three dots in full.
Sorry, yes, it wasn't allowing me to come off, yes.
Hey, we are, it is 7:25. We are out of executive session, I believe. We're going to have a motion to, to not act and to refer this to, to HR and to the principal of the matter for us. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Yes, you do.
All right. I'm going to call the roll call on that motion. Krista, what say you?
Aye.
You said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hardy, aye.
Hardy, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's what we're going to do now, director's comments. What's your, Hardy?
Okay, I'd just like to thank Jim, he's left, but he's done a great job with the budget. And I'm sure he's helped Angela a lot, and, and I'll help you too, if you'd like.
Okay.
I'm making an appointment with you.
Kathy?
Yeah, Jim's done a great job, and thank you for helping too. And I want to thank Angela for the Thanksgiving and veterans.
Yes, that was nice.
She was very nice, and it was great.
Krista, any comments?
I'm just thanks to Angela and the school and everyone that helped with the Thanksgiving feast and the Halloween parade. It's really exciting to see all that coming back.
All right, and Lynn?
Again, on the Thanksgiving thing, that was very nicely done, it was great.
Me, sounds like an echo chamber, but it's really important to have those community connections being reestablished. I think it's almost impossible, underestimate how important they are to reconnect us. It's the one thing I've heard more of than anything else for the last couple of years. And yeah, by God, it's nice to have, we have a reasonably transparent, I have some problems about the, about the budget stuff on the, on some of the third-party funding, but by God, it was clear, it's broken up by function, this is the way people ought to do it. And I know with Jim's help, and certainly with Hardy's, that we'll get our budget, or be able to here in relatively short order. And thank you all. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Over there, we adjourn.
Thank you, and we are adjourned. All right, so we can off all this stuff.